Good morning and welcome to everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, December 3rd. And if we'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as we move forward, are there any adjustments or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Yesterday afternoon, I received from the Arrowhead County Association a legislative priority ballot. And so if we could put that on the agenda sometime at your discretion, and I'll discuss it and go over it later then.
Sure. Let's put that on after the disposition of county-owned land, so it would become our new item five.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I make motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and a support to approve our amended agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to our public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board. When invited to speak, please note the following guidelines. Speak into the microphone for clarity. Sign the public comment sheet and state your name, address, and the topic you're addressing this morning. And you can speak respectfully for up to five minutes. Public comments reserved for the board to hear views. It's not a time for debate or discussion. And at the board's discretion, we can agree to schedule matters addressed at public comment at a current or future board agenda. And if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things I wanted to talk about today. One of them happens to be on your agenda. It's the job description of the new county administrator. But I'm going to start with, statistics are great tools. You can make them say whatever you want to prove your point. For instance, the school referendum, some would like to say there was an overwhelming yes. Reality, 54% said yes and 46% said no. That's a lot of folks who don't believe in this million-dollar expansion that's not education. The commissioner race, the same, 411 to 456. Forty-five votes, too close to think that there is a clear message. In fact, it's so close, there is a reality here for all of us. That is, there are as many people who think we need a change, that someone else needs to take a new look at county government, as there are who are willing to accept the status quo. Are any of you willing to hear what people want to say? Something you keep telling us you also want, but provide almost no opportunity? Five minutes, twice a month hardly counts. I'd like to comment on the letter to the commissioners from former county administrator Jerky. In accepting his resignation, a simple thank you was not enough. This person was placed on a pedestal for doing a well-paid-for job. No more. And then you may ask, was the job really being done as the commissioners intended? Or did that get lost somewhere? There is a proposed job description from August 2024. Now, I don't know how that relates to the one that you're looking at today, but this is where I'm coming from. There are some pretty blatant conflicts in what that job description says in relation to this statement that Jerky made. And you can find that, check it out on social media, in the November 22 News Herald article, "This is the Long Way Home." He says, "I didn't go to the county board meeting today because there has been too much negativity and pettiness in recent county board meetings." He goes on to criticize his bosses, you, the commissioners, and us, the public, as ignorant and malicious. The conflict comes in the Knowledge Skills and Abilities section of the job description. It lists the ability to establish and maintain effective working relationships with others, like his employers, and the ability to communicate effectively orally and in writing, and have strong, positive public relations skills. There are more skills and abilities listed, which we won't go into right now, but you can digest them yourself. Just get a copy of that unapproved job description. And perhaps we know why that one in August remains unapproved. Remember, this is a person who could do no wrong from the pedestal he operated on. Now specifically to his letter, the one good suggestion that he made has been disregarded. That is to step back and see what, if any, changes could be made to improve the way the organization works. There is a lot of back patting and "look what I have done" in that letter. And don't stop there, because the real heart of the message is in the criticism of you, his bosses, our elected commissioners. If this form of government is so successful, why all the criticism of you? Aren't you insulted? I know I am for you. What don't you see or don't you want to see? You practically gave him a gold crown, and this is how he gets the final negative word in. You are accused of theatrics. Let's see, what's more theatrical than putting your head in the sand because there has been too much negativity and pettiness in recent county board meetings? He calls himself a professional administrator. What's professional about running from a board meeting and telling people about it? What sets the worst tone is the last paragraph, calling this a dogfight. A terrible way, very non-professional to refer to this process. This is not a fight. It's a welcome opportunity to rethink, explore, and evaluate the effectiveness and commitment each of you has made to the public who have entrusted you with our county. Will you look into who and what you are? Ask, where am I going? What is motivating me? And remember who you work for. Now the reality, if you pursue county administrator, what happens if there is no one acceptable from this candidate pool? Are you ready to tell DDA no? Or have you put all of us in such a position, you feel you must take the best of the unacceptable?
Just one more minute.
That's been done before, and the result was not great. Please slow down this race to what end? It is too costly, both dollars and cents, and the negative outcome for the county.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Are there any commissioners that have received comments to read? All right, we'll close the public comment period at this time and move forward to our consent agenda. And there's an item I would like to poll, which is item B, the minutes. Are there any other items commissioners would like to poll? So is their motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner, will you please list what we just agreed to on the consent agenda, please?
I'd be happy to. So we agreed to claims, the resignation of Kurt Loboda, and the loophole newspaper bids for 2025. The item that's pulled that I'd like to just discuss briefly is just a correction in the minutes that need to be made related to the pay table and to the motion that I made at our last board meeting. I made a motion to adjust the salary, or excuse me, the grade to 270 for the county administrator with a spread of 7% between the upper grades. And so I have sent that to Janet. Her computer was updating, and so we weren't able to get it changed. But I just wanted to make note of that. Any questions about that? All right, we will move on, and at this point, move on to item four, which is disposition of county-owned land to the Cook County HRA. So last week at our board meeting, I, in my commissioner updates, alerted you that there was a situation that came up very, very quickly, related to an opportunity that the HRA had to make an application to the IRRB on behalf of Hamilton Habitat for potentially some county-owned land. And we would need, if all goes appropriately, to pass a resolution at our next December meeting on December 17th to basically make a disposition of land to the HRA for the purpose of Hamilton Habitat to build some single-family homes. This would require a subdivision of parcel that we have, and I've included maps for you, the parcel report, the wetland delineation. And in fact, right now, Charlie Trobal is working on a new survey of the property. But I'm just wondering, Anna Hamilton is here to answer any questions that the board may have about this. So is there any questions that you have, any discussion that you would like to have prior to December 17th? Jason Hale's going to be with Anna. There is a meeting with the IRRB this Friday, and so we'll know much more after that. But I just want to make sure that if there are any questions board members have, Anna's here to address them. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your work and ongoing work and past work as well. I have concerns about conveying public land to private hands. We know housing is a huge issue. We've also made incredible strides towards that issue, and the ramifications are yet to be seen. Because of our land scarcity, I see single-family homes as a much less bang-for-buck option. And I know there's a lot of wetlands there, and so it may not be feasible to have multifamily homes. But one of my concerns is also, if it were to be a single-family home, just how much family could be in that versus an individual. And so for some other projects, I know they're smaller and some are larger. And so I'm just wondering if you had a clear plan yet, and I know this is really fast turnover for the grant and all that, but if you had a clear plan about how many bedrooms there would be? And it looks like there are six potential there. But just wanted to learn more about that. And just for your reference, too, there have been other ideas, I wouldn't say plans necessarily, for this land, largely around recreation. So one could argue it's not a highest priority as housing at this point, but it is kind of part of that whole school, community center, campus. And so there's that in the back of my mind, too. But I don't know how far along the housing plans are.
Anna, if you could come up to the mic, and while Anna's coming up, I can address some of the comments that you shared, Commissioner. There were other discussions about that particular property long ago, expansion of ballfields, a discussion about disc golf being in the area. And we do believe there still would be enough land north of the ballfield to put in disc golf, but that really is part of the Sawtooth Bluffs master plan. And in speaking to some of the members of that disc golf group, they feel that is probably a better site for it. But anyway, Anna is here and graciously came to respond to questions, so we'll turn it over to Anna.
Okay. Well, I think your question was about what my plan is.
It doesn't have to be super specific, but just, are they multi-bedroom or single-bedroom?
Well, bedroom and a half.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so just, yeah, I'm just trying to think of the land scarcity, and I know infrastructure is a huge barrier for getting anything done.
Specifically there?
Specifically at this site, or?
That's the only reason the IRRB is even involved. We're talking big bucks, sewers down on Fifth. So, yeah, big bucks for the infrastructure.
Yeah. Kind of what my, and shame on me for not being more involved in HRA goings-ons. It's often a, I can watch the videos. I guess that shouldn't be an excuse at all. I'm just wondering about, so north of there, right? Creechville is the Blackwell addition, and there's all kinds of parcels, right? And so when we're doing infrastructure, going up there can really service a larger area. As we go west of town, or even that school trust land, which is also wet, and shame on me for not knowing how wet and where that all lines out, I'm just wondering if there are areas that we can bring infrastructure, use IRRR money, bring infrastructure to and have like a larger plat for either more homes, or multifamily homes, or both? And I just am not aware enough of the, and it's not on you to know either, but of the HRA's plans for that type of strategy, so.
I don't know what the HRA plans are at all.
Yeah.
I just know that, yeah, land is scarce. That's my biggest problem. That's my biggest hurdle. And to back up a minute, I have just done, I'm currently working on two two-bedroom homes.
Right.
Last year, I did two two-bedroom homes.
Right.
The people that I work with that are in most need of homes are not families right now. I mean, there are families that need homes. Don't misunderstand me.
Yep.
But I'm trying to build affordable, and it's hard to do when you're spending a million dollars on infrastructure.
Yeah.
And land, if you're lucky enough to get it.
Yeah.
In regards to that area, I'm very familiar with that area. At one time, I had an offer on the school property, which was 38 acres, probably three-quarters wet land.
Oh.
You know, that was years ago. But I do know that strip of land along the Gunflint Trail. I made multiple offers on EDA parcels. They were all turned down at the time because they were not, EDA was not into building housing as for economic development. So I'm, I do know most of those parcels around there.
Okay.
And there's been hurdles in all of them, regardless of whether it's between myself and the city, myself and the EDA, it doesn't really matter. This piece of land is the only piece of land that I see in the city that I could get multiple homes on at one time. It would be an efficient way to build. Everybody could stay on site until six homes, if that's how that works out, were built. My plan is to have six homes all the same. It would be a little village, if you will. And there are plenty of single people, if not couples, that are in need of these homes. I have a list to prove it. I could knock six people off my list. And, you know, if there's a better use for it, that's entirely up to you. I just know what my intentions are and why, you know, Jason had brought this land up to me six months ago or something. And then when I found out he was leaving, all of a sudden, I panicked, which was like a week ago, week and a half ago.
Yeah.
And I just said, hey, before you leave, could you please, you know, get a word in for me? And that's where we're at.
Yeah.
And I just met with the IRRB as well about a week and a half ago. And so all this is happening really fast.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to bang for bucket, right? And again, I appreciate the background on the school trust land. I'm also curious, west of town, and again, it's not on you to figure that out or know that.
Right.
I'm just trying to strategize public land.
Sure.
Versus, because once it's private, it's private, right?
Right.
Versus all of ours to manage and kind of being part of that campus, I guess I took for granted. So I'm not against this.
No, I get it.
I just have knee-jerk reactions and concerns, and I'll keep processing, and I'll certainly reach out if I have more questions or ideas or whatever to you. I know where to find you.
I'll try to keep my opinion.
Commissioner White, you have questions?
Ms. Sullivan, would you, Sullivan, Hamilton, sorry, wrong way. That didn't turn fast enough. Would you please explain, because I would imagine there might be some people in the county that does not know about, about the projects that you have built, the philosophy behind it, and, I mean, why is it, multi-unit construction is one thing, but the goal is something else? But if you and your words could better, of course, you can better explain what you've done, and generically, who is residing or have purchased the homes that have been built?
Hamilton Habitat just began in 2020, and that's when we became a nonprofit. We actually built our first house prior to that in Creechville, because that was a lot that was available. We just jumped on it. And we've built, I'm working on my ninth home in those four years, and I feel pretty good about that. Who am I focusing on and who's in the homes right now? Are the working-class people of this county that keep this county moving, people that can afford our real estate? And a lot of them are pushed out, and they're, you know, they're forced to leave the county, whether they have children or not. There's a big demand for people with children as well. I just, I can't, you know, I'm only what I am. And so we work 100% off of donations, and we build at cost. I am fortunate enough to work at the local lumberyard where they partnered with us, and they give every, all our materials to us at cost, which is partially why I'm able to do what I do. The frustration is that we're only, we can only build so many houses a year. You know, there's, it can only happen so fast. So we've been able to do two a year so far, and math doesn't quite work out that way, but it doesn't matter. We're on our ninth home. And both of these homes will be sold at cost. All of our homes are deed restricted. They cannot be rented in any capacity. And to keep them from flipping the home, because technically, the minute they get into their home, they have a lot of equity. Equity is part of my goal. I appreciate apartment living. I appreciate North Star. I appreciate all the different forms of housing. However, typically, the working stiff only has equity if they're fortunate enough to own a home. That's their, what they have, and that's what I want them to have. I think they deserve a piece of this pie that we are also fortunate to have. And that's what I'm working on, I guess.
Can you talk more about the flipping restrictions? Like, is that in perpetuity?
Well, because I don't want to restrict the land, and I want them to own the land, unlike North Star projects, I, our very first home, prior to becoming a nonprofit, we sold to a little itty-bitty house in Creechville, and they moved after a year and a half. And they had $100,000 worth of equity instantly, based on our market, our real estate market.
Off of your work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we sold it to them for $110,000, and they sold it for $219,000, and that hurt. So the additional deed restriction is that if they were to sell their home in the first five years of purchase, they have to split the equity with Hamilton Habitat. And we hope that's a deterrent. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Are there ways to do it in perpetuity?
I don't even know what that word means.
Forever.
There is.
Because after five years, they could flip it, and then we're back where we are, kind of. That's what I like about the land trust model, is it is for 100 years, and.
And I'm not interested in that.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, like, I know it's a restriction, but it also is a protection. And so I'm trying to think long-term, or else, just in five years, if it flips, we're back to where we are now. And so that's one of the things I'm trying to get a better handle on. Right now, our multifamily projects are private, right? And so they have, we're going to be in a similar situation in 15 years or whatever as we are with Grand Marais, or Birchwood, or, you know, those. And I'm really hoping and looking for something that's a much longer-term solution. And it's, again, this is not all on you. Like, this is not your problem to solve. And I appreciate all the work that you are doing towards solving it, but I'm just trying to strategize a longer-term solution and figuring out all the things we can do. And you're absolutely right, we need all types of housing, not just for families, but for individuals or couples, and it's 100% accurate. So I'm appreciative of the housing that you do provide.
Commissioner White.
Commissioner Mills, so.
Present.
Yes, you are. And so, so we have these other developments privately owned. There is, do we have caps on the amount of rent that can be, there are no rental caps on these units? So, so what is the cost for on the, up on Gunflint Trail, the view, the Harborview one? That's not the name of it, Gunflint View.
Gunflint View.
What's the cost for a, do you know what the cost of, maybe Molly does for a efficiency is?
Nope, I don't, I don't have that committed to memory.
Do we have the range? So there's no guarantee that in one year, two years, five years, those rents will not skyrocket? There's no guarantee on that. What Hamilton Habitat does is give housing ownership, ownership, which is a huge thing in, for a community, is for its community members to have skin in the game. They own this, there's a pride, it's, there's studies been done about all of this. And so to provide housing, the American dream, we own our house, we take care of our house, and this is where we live and work in this community. So it is a, I think it would be great if we could have all sorts of houses like this as opposed to apartment living, though I, not opposed to the apartments. I understand the value of that at this point in time, but it is not incumbent on Hamilton Habitat to solve the housing issues of Cook County, and you have stated that. So I just want to, just applaud the efforts that have gone into this. And this piece of property we were looking at, it's pretty much wetlands. It's, it's, it's going to cost a lot of money to get it, so it is a lot of permitting, mitigation. I don't know how much fill you're going to need. Maybe if they build the second apartments, they can, second unit at the Gunflint View, they'll have to blast a whole lot more for the next one, and there'll be free fill there, too. So it's not something that happens overnight, and Hamilton Habitat has persevered through some pretty, you started this before you were a nonprofit.
Right.
You were out there. So I'm not concerned about, I'm not going to tell them how to set up their business structure. We have an opportunity to assist a nonprofit, as it is, to help us with our housing crisis.
One of the things I'd like to point out, just for not only commissioners, but for the public, is that attached to the board packet is the housing analysis that was done for the EDA back in 2022, indicating that we do need multiple types of housing. And then in addition to that is a copy of the strategic plan for the HRA, and that identifies that we need a number of tiny houses. that we need a number of tiny houses, cottage courtyards, and the project that Hamilton Habitat has in mind for this parcel really fits the strategic plan and where they are in the HRA at this point in time. I know Commissioner Johnson is part of the HRA. She is our primary representative. And is there any remark you'd like to share or any thoughts you have?
Yeah, I agree. Thank you so much for being proactive here and trying to get this done before Jason leaves, because this has been talked about more than once. How can we, we need all kinds of housing in Cook County, and I really applaud your efforts to make sure that the people that really work here stay here and have something, have a place that they can call their own. We, I pushed for those apartment buildings when I first joined the HRA, because that was the quickest way to solve a problem. But that's not the only thing we need. We need to have a place for people to say, I don't want to live in apartment forever. I don't want my rent going to some company from out of the county. I want to invest in my own house and have my own place. And unfortunately, with the reality of housing prices right now, that's not an option for most people that are working the day-to-day jobs in Cook County that we need. So thank you for providing that opportunity to them. I fully support. I think this is an excellent location for six small homes. And the fact that we're going to have that path going by on the upper side for a walking path, I think it makes sense that it's on the lower side of a truck route instead of on the other side of a truck route. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I fully support this.
And a question I have is, I know you've engaged Charlie Troval to work on the plat. That's a requirement that the city of Grand Murray has since the county owns that parcel within the city limits. What is Charlie's timeline, and can you update us on that work?
Well, again, I, this has been a week and a half. And I, I was hoping he could get something put together right away, just so I had something to show people, to present to you. But as of yesterday, he said that was impossible. But by the December 17th meeting, he will have something, you know, just be on paper. The wetlands is a hurdle. It's two-thirds of the property. So to work around those is going to be interesting, but he will have a map for me by then, you know.
That's very helpful. Commissioner Starley, any questions or comments you have?
Um, thank you, Anna, for this. I really appreciate your forging ahead and understanding what's going to be needed in the county. And like you say, it's been a week and a half. You know, you'll put your things together with the help of other people and IRR, and I just wish you good luck in this, because I really support what you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Anna? Commissioner Mills?
I feel a little misunderstood, and I want to make sure people are understanding my concerns. I, I am very grateful for the work that Hamilton Habitat has done and continues to do, and, and want to support it. You know, I am trying to, again, bang for buck what we can do with the limited land we have and the limited dollars we have. And so, again, I'm not against this project by any means. I have concerns, and there's some conflicts. But what I'm wondering is the broader, the broader plan for the HRA, and there are a large number of parcels west of town, and there are a number of parcels on the wrong side of the, of the truck route, which you've looked at before, that I think might have a better bang for buck. So I just want to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. I, I agree that this can be an excellent location for six small homes, and, and that on this side of the road makes more sense. I, I, and I also want to express the concern about just the campus idea for, for our school and, and community center. So I'm not, I feel like it was interpreted as hypercritical, and I want to make sure that's, that's not the case. And I still have concerns, and I still want to learn about our other options. And if we're, if we are getting IRRB money, is this the best way? And so.
I understand you're not being negative. I, I didn't hear that. What I understand you to say is that, aside from the school campus thing, is that you would like the land to retain, to remain affordable. How do we keep that affordable? How do we keep that out of the whatever's going on right now? Which is crazy. But, and I appreciate that. I'm just not a land trust fan. I'm just telling you, I'm just not a fan.
And Jason had hoped he could be here. He had two other meetings he was unable to reschedule. So Commissioner Mills, I think one thing is if you can connect with Jason to talk about those other parcels, that would probably provide you with the information maybe you need.
Yeah. I'm not saying the apartments are where people should live forever by any means. Those are some stepping stones to get in, get a foot in the door sort of thing. And, and again, whenever you're renting, you're just throwing money to the, to the property owner, and that's not building equity. And, and I, I recognize that's a problem. It's, it's not necessarily investing in our community. And so I've talked with Jason about longer-term solutions. How do we do this? Can we have public housing so that we can make sure that people aren't forced out and redstone skyrocket, or, or we can really assist people? And I'm just, my fear is that after five years, it can just go back to the market, and, and then what do we got? So I'm not concerned about the cost of the land if we are to convey it. That's, that's not the rub. It's just kind of that longer-term plan and control. And I understand you're not a fan of the land trust model. It's, it's just, I'm looking for the longer, longest-term solution we can find, and maybe this is what we got right now, and, and that's how it's going to be, so. But I'll, I'll connect with Jason again. He, when I, when I talk to him about that idea of public housing or that longer-term model, he, he says yes, but we're not, our organization is not built for that right now. Who's going to manage that? Who's going to operate it? And so from his perspective, we have to make these types of steps to get developers on board, to be able to build, and then at some point, when we have more projects under our belt, we'll be able to handle more of that public side of things to, to really assist our community more. But step by step, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner White, did you have a question?
Well, it doesn't, I don't recall this type of soul-wrenching over other community developers or outside developers that were presented to do these different construction models. And part of the commu, part of the school campus, you got, the kids can walk to school, and after five years, I mean, if kids, any families live in there, well, one, it'll be the household that everyone hangs out in, because they can walk there. But two, we're not assuming, when somebody gets, they're, they're fortunate enough to build a, have a house and build a home, they're often not in a hurry, like, to sell it to make more money, because it, with the current rise in real estate prices, they would not be able to afford what's out there anyway, you know? So, and I, and with the school, I believe if the school has its concerns, then the school should also be at the table, and I really doubt, though I cannot speak for the school as an entity, that, I, I don't, I don't believe the school has any ideas to do an expansion in that area because of wetlands. I mean, wetlands. It's a huge, huge cost, and they have other, other items that take priority, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Anna? Thank you so much for coming this morning and sharing information, and we'll look forward to seeing you on December 17th.
Thank you very much.
All right. Take care. Have a good day. We'll move on now to item four, which is Commissioner Starley's opportunity to talk a little bit about some legislative priorities for the ACA.
Yes, thank you. So the association, County Association that I attend to, we do have legislative priorities also, and we're represented down at the legislative session by John Argaro. He's there for about five months when the session's going, and then he kind of keeps in touch with what's happening. So you see the amount of counties that are involved here, and so Commissioner Mills, this is a rank choice. You really like that idea, so here we are with this one anyway, not with the general election.
A true majority.
So basically, you know, Pilt, we know what Pilt is, and we had discussed the ramifications of what happens in regards to the next phase about the Lake Shore study and when that's going to be completed. So that's a concern there for folks. The blight is, in several counties, they are having problems with maybe farmsteads that fall down, places that are not tended to, and cities that have to take care of actually removing items. And the woody biomass really is in regards to the Forest Service going in and removing the dead trees, the things that are being invaded by different species, and leaving the good trees stand, because if you don't clear out what's happening with the dead stuff, you're subject to fires and so forth. So we felt that, or I felt that on the top part of the primary, the priorities, two of them really don't apply to us, but we wanted to put that in there for the folks who do have a concern about this. And then the secondary priorities are the housing, childcare, and emergency medical services. So if you just take a moment or two to rank them, one being the highest priority that you feel for Cook County, and the third, three being the lowest. And then if you just pass the papers to me, I'll get the final total to Barb Kaski, who is our secretary for the 17th, or no, for the return by the 17th. When we go down for the legislative sessions, I do meet with John Argaro and other legislators. We have a dinner one of the nights that we're there, and so these things, these issues will be brought up there also, because we had a good attendance last year. Senator Rothschild, Representative Sklaba, and we had a full house at our dinner, but who wouldn't want to go to dinner and meet with county commissioners? So thank you on all of this. I'll put it all together and get it off.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move on at this time to our next item on our agenda, and thank Engineer Haas for waiting. Oh, we have two people coming for it. Hi, Matt. So we have two items. I'll be addressing a contract and authorization to purchase.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First thing is our Tofti Park Road Improvement Project. And so we've talked about that over the last couple of years. Yep, Commissioner Starley. So this has been in the work for a while. It was actually supposed to go last year, but because of all, actually, all the positive engagement we had in the community, we really wanted to make sure we incorporated those changes the best we could to really make the project not something that I came up with, but something that the homeowners and the landowners in the town of Tofti really got to make their own. And so that's the result we ended up with. You can see in, in the bid abstract there, our bids, actually, all of them came in under what our engineer's estimate was, but within reasonable range. So I'm very, very confident in the price, which is great. You can see our estimate was about $836,000, and our low bid is KGM Contractors at just over $777,000. So funding for this comes from the transportation sales tax fund, if you remember that. That was the half-cent tax that got passed in 2018, somewhere in that range. Has a whole list of projects. This is one of them. Great use of the funds. Anybody have any questions?
If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve this contract to do the Tofti Park Road Improvement.
Support.
We have a motion, quick support. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And now, moving on to authorization to purchase a GMC Sierra 2500. Matt?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, this is a budgeted item in '25, and the reason I'm coming to you now is because order windows have been very difficult to track with almost every auto manufacturer. And so even years ago, we were trying to replace one, and they just said, no, you can't order one right now. And I said, well, when could I order one? And they said, we don't know, but we'll let you know. And we never heard anything else. So it's been very difficult to track when we can order a truck off state bid. One of those windows has opened up. We kind of stumbled into it. And so this is a budgeted purchase. The money wouldn't be expended until '25, but we just got to get that order in while it's, it's available. And as you see, there is a, certainly a financial implication. Even over the last couple of years, there's been a huge increase in the cost, even on state bid, which is the absolute cheapest we can get unless we started shopping on Marketplace. So, yeah, that's, if anybody has any questions, I can try to answer.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
I know, because I know this is going to be asked by the public. What kind of truck and what kind of options are on this truck?
Yeah, still, still kind of hammering out exactly what the, what the options are, but it's a GMC very similar to the one that, that you see driving around now. The options are fairly standard, and it's a three-quarter ton. So the reason we do three-quarter ton rather than half-ton is just because of the utility that a, a maintenance vehicle needs to supply, needs to be able to tow. And, and our shop has given the seal of approval on a three-quarter over a half-ton.
Other questions? Commissioner White?
You should say it's a four-wheel drive, and you have cloth interior.
Four-wheel drive, cloth interior.
And you have a radio?
And a radio.
You're good.
And headlights.
Oh, well.
Heated steering wheel?
Honestly, we, we are trying to parse out what is, comes standard and what we can actually extract for even a couple hundred dollar savings.
Okay.
Those are becoming more and more standard, however.
Any other questions? Commissioner Starley?
Well, I appreciate what you've looked into and kept at this. The only thing is, I wish we could do that with our vehicles and only get what we want, like a steering wheel and four wheels, you know? Because we're getting so much stuff on our vehicles these days. So I'm glad you can be a little more choosy with what you want on the truck.
Commissioner White?
Do, does our highway department have the machines to check the, the computers? I mean, we have all of that technology, so we can try to figure out what's wrong when the lights are flashing or not flashing and.
Yeah, one of the reasons we stick with the same manufacturer is all the, you know, we can try to optimize the tooling we have for each, each different, you know, whether it be Mack for our trucks or GMC for our passenger vehicles.
Other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
All support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We look forward to that new truck.
Maybe by 2028 to look at it.
Yeah. We won't hold our breath. All right, we'll move on to our next item, land services, and we have Tim Nelson and Niva Maxwell with us this morning. Good morning, and thank you for waiting.
Good morning. The first item I have for you is a revisit to an item that was on your November 12th agenda. So this was the new telecommunications tower proposed by Vertical Bridge and Schroder. After, well, during your November 12th meeting, there was some discussion about technical questions, and you guys voted to remand it back to the Planning Commission, which was the next day. And in between that time, the applicant provided some additional technical details that are in your packet today as addendum. that are in your packet today as addendum three, and then addendum four. And so addendum three is providing clarification about shadowing detail and interference. And the applicant has provided information that indicates that the tower alternative location discussion really isn't feasible, although we can look on a map and think, well, just nudge it a little bit over to Sugarloaf Road and you can, you know, use existing infrastructure. The applicant clarifies that you're just increasing that gap from the existing cell tower in Lake County. So you're not actually closing a gap, you're just shifting a gap further. So they provided that information about kind of the character and locality of that Kramer Road and Sugarloaf Road area. So those really don't work for the area that they're looking to cover. Also, what we received additional information on is information from Schroeder Township itself and EMS officials. So they reached out to myself, as well as some Planning Commission members, and said, hey, we really want this tower. And so that was great to hear because I didn't hear that during that first public hearing portion of things. So it kind of bumped up the prioritization of this tower, really, to indicate that it is a public safety need for the community there and very highly supported. So what I've done in this packet, excuse me, is provide some of these details in that summary. I also provided revised findings. So the version of the findings that I have in your November 12th packet, these have been adjusted a little bit to indicate some of those characteristics that we provided additional information on. And then we had questions about the heights, and the applicant provided more information also that, hey, this height is really due to co-location. If we just wanted this tower to service one carrier, being T-Mobile, it could be a shorter tower. But because we in Cook County do prioritize co-location and efficient use of our utilities, that's why that additional height is needed. So the Planning Commission during that discussion really indicated that they felt that this application was satisfactory. It was meeting the ordinances of the tower ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And they unanimously voted for approval, which was different than the first time. The first discussion, it was a five to one vote with one opposition. So after that further discussion, the Planning Commission fully supported recommendation of this with the four conditions attached with the findings that I have before you today.
Are there any questions for Neva? Commissioner Mills?
I'm not quite understanding the shadowing part of it. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so they talk about shadowing being the characteristic when you have trees and, you know, why you lose service going through a tunnel is the most intense version of that. We drop calls in the middle of a tunnel because the waves can't get through that rock. The same thing can kind of happen to a certain degree of the trees. When you have the towers a little closer together, they can kind of help each other and assist to close that shadowing interference issue.
Thank you.
So the more you make towers further from each other, the more that that's impactful to your service.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Starling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So since this came before the Planning Commission once and then came to us and went back to the Planning Commission, I've had some conversations with folks in the West End. And I really wanted to see perhaps more of the inclusive folks who live up the Kramer Road to be a part of this too. And I hadn't even thought about going further west. But, and since that's not possible, since I believe this was looked into for land and so forth, I've come to the conclusion that, you know, safety is really important, especially when I hear that some of our EMTs have to use their phone when they go out to make a call. And so that's not good at all. The other thing that's interesting is, and maybe our interim administrator could help me understand this, but this isn't the first time that private people have been asked to put a tower on their land. I've received a couple of phone calls from other folks who, there are people out there searching, companies are out there searching where to put towers. So am I right in that, that this is kind of a trend that's maybe starting now, rather than coming to the county to say, this is, we're looking into Cook County for X, Y, D, that tower?
Yeah, it's both. Cook County has a good relationship with partners throughout the state and private companies, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon. They're in those meetings as they're continuing to push into the public safety arena and as it becomes more dependent on cell service. Wireless broadband is a huge component for the statewide emergency communications board and DPS, Department of Public Safety. So that's there. The reaching out to private property owners has been going on for a very long time. And, you know, in Cook County, the tower ordinance has been crafted in a way that tries to emphasize co-location and reduce the number of towers that kind of proliferate throughout the county and try to consolidate it to co-location on individual towers. And then if you're not able to co-locate on an individual tower, we're asking you that you co-locate within a tower district to minimize the impact to the view shed. But in relation to this project, I mean, they looked at all of those components and found that, you know, either co-locating on an existing tower or within a tower district was not something that they could do and provide the coverage for the area that they're wanting to provide.
Okay, thank you. You always become aware of something when it sort of blinks at you. It's never been discussed before. It's like, whoa, wait a minute, what's happening now? And, you know, to the point of, if this is going to continue with private landowners being asked, then when we approve something, I think we should be aware of, there is perhaps a trend happening. And how do we handle one situation and not in the future, four, or five, or six? So there has been a couple of parties who have been approached by tower companies further up the Kramer Road. So, but they're not interested. So, you know, they can certainly refuse it for sure. And I like the idea that it's gone up a little bit higher so that a couple more carriers could be on there too. So that makes sense. So thank you for all of this information and for the work that you did too.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Vertical Bridge conditional use permit.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Starling. Is there a support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for all your time and effort. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item B, which is the Woodland Foothills First Edition Preliminary and Final Plat.
Thank you. So this is the, like you said, the preliminary and final plat application. This is the first edition of the Woodland Foothills plat. This will create five new residential lots that will have a space for a 1,200 square foot house and a 30 by 30 parking area on each lot. This will complete the build-out of the Woodland Foothills plat itself. This was first reviewed and the public hearing was held on October 13th at the Planning Commission, which was untabled to allow some time for some very minor plat modifications. The county recorder, former county recorder Dusty Nelms and the county surveyor completed their technical review and provided those comments that were taken into consideration. And then at the November 13th, Planning Commission is when this was heard again, and the Planning Commission unanimously voted approval of both the preliminary and the final plat.
And I'd like to just remark that there was a review by Mitch Everson of the current septic, and it is absolutely fine and has the capacity to add these additional properties. Any other questions for Neva or comments?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd just like to make a comment about this little area that is really being developed. I remember years ago, it was just a tiny little road, well, it's still a tiny little road, going back up in there with one little house. And, but there was potential. So now we're reaching the potential. And I don't know how much more could be developed. Is there more potential in this area?
My understanding is that this is the intent of the developers is just to complete these five lots, and then they'll be done with the build-out.
Okay, okay. All right, well, it's a nice little community, and every once in a while, I go visit a friend, and they're just, they're just really happy that it's like their own little community there, which is kind of the goal of developing areas that we just talked about previously.
Absolutely. There's no other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there a support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any additional discussion or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, human resources. And we see that we have Allison Plummer with us this morning. Thank you so much, Allison, for being with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. So one agenda item I have for you all today, this is kind of stemming off the recent board action of modifying, updating our pay table structure. But I bring forth to you our revised, updated county administrator job description, excuse me, that went through the job description review process with DDA and is ready to be brought to you all for final review and approval. Also requesting with the revised job description, a change in the job grade as determined by DDA, that it is applicable to move it from a current 260 to a 270 now that that is represented in our pay table.
Any questions for Allison? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. I kind of feel like we are putting the cart before the horse here. We just recently had, all of us sat down with DDA to talk about what are we looking for in an administrator? What are the qualities? What are the, what do we need? And I haven't seen that yet. So it just seems to me that I kind of need to have that information to know whether or not this really is the job description for our next administrator. I would prefer to have this discussion about what do we need after we've got all the information that we asked everybody for.
Can I just add that I think that that's a great point, but they're two very different things. So the qualities that we are looking for in a person is what we see through the application and interview process, how they would fit. This is what are the actual duties of the job regardless of the qualities of the individual that we're looking for. So these are, these are the duties that former administrator Yorkie did in order to keep the organization running regardless of what he was like as a person and those qualities that he brought to the position.
And I agree, there's a difference there, but I gave concrete what I think our next administrator should do, what should be some of the roles that should be taken on. And we haven't discussed that as a board. I shared my opinion. The DDA rep said, ooh, that's kind of a theme. I got that answer more than once. And so the fact that we haven't decided what we wanted or talked about what we wanted haven't, we asked the employees through the union reps what they wanted, and I don't know what that answer is. I did ask him, can I see that? And I can't yet. I think it's really important, before we say what, put out a job description, that we all have a discussion about what do we want our next administrator to do. Looking at some job descriptions from other counties, there's a variety of things we could be asking for. And there are some things that I think are, we missed in our last administrator that maybe we want to consider changing the role for where we are today. So I just can't support agreeing to this today.
Commissioner Starling?
Yes. My understanding was, after all of us met with Pat, that we'll get feedback from him in terms of areas that we feel are important in the position description. So we haven't received that. So I don't know if, I really am looking forward to that.
I understand that as well, but again, what I understand is there's going to be a look at what are the qualities of the person that is totally separate from a job description. None of our other job descriptions in our organization would we ever do this when we're in the process of hiring. We have a process for going through job descriptions. We've been doing it the last three years. Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Sullivan, I respectfully will point out that we are the boss. We get to decide what that next administrator's role is and what their duties are, which is laid out in here. And it's not about a personality thing. It's about what do we want that next person to do? And we get to make that decision. And we have to get input from our staff. We need to talk to each other about, do we all agree on what we want in our next administrator? I came up with a couple ideas that I mentioned during my interview of skills and areas that I think the next administrator should be, we should consider. And I thought during that interview process, all that information would be gathered so we would have a document that says, what are we looking for? What do we, what do we need? And I just feel very uncomfortable putting something out there if we haven't had those discussions yet.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, in my mind, the job description is the quantitative aspect, and the interview with Pat was the qualitative aspect. And so the quantitative aspect, I would think, would be done in, much like any other job description, like the Personnel Committee. And I guess if there are, if there's quantitative things that you've identified in other administrator, other counties administrators' job description, I'd be open to that. I don't know if you have any examples of...
Well, yeah, but, so, I guess I was kind of picturing a community of the whole where we talk about, we get the report from DDA. We talk about how we interpret that report. How do we move forward? Compare it to, how do other counties have their job description? What's different? And are there good things that we're missing that other counties are doing that maybe we should consider?
Yeah, in my review of other counties administrator positions, I haven't found quantitative items that I thought should be included that are not in ours. And so I have a hard time interpreting the qualitative aspects into quantitative. And so that's why I'm just like looking for examples of what you're identifying.
Well, I noticed that in this job description, we're asking for 10 years minimum of experience. Other counties don't have that large of a experience timeframe, good or bad, I don't know. But it, also, they have a list of minimums and then desires qualities. We don't have that. And one of the things that I pointed out in my interview was that I really feel that our next administrator needs to have experience in small municipal governments somehow, small, not big city government where you come and there's lots of people to do the jobs, but learning to work with departments that maybe have a small staff. And there's a different dynamic there, I think, that is important. So that was one of the things that I pointed out as far as needing. But when we have qualifications and experience, I'd like to see that we say, hey, if you have small government experience, that's kind of a desired quality. Maybe it's not a requirement, but I just, that was one. And another one from another county here was, it specifically stated, and I don't know, maybe it's worded differently here, but it was clear that the administrator assists in the hiring process for leadership positions. And maybe that's in here, and like I said, it's very confusing to me. But I thought it was, hey, at least they put that out there in the job description. That is a priority. So yeah, these are the things I thought we, as a board, were going to be talking about coming together and not just... we, as a board, were going to be talking about coming together and not just accepting the job description as written by our former administrator.
So are there items you would change in that job description? Like, as I said, when I went through it, I didn't have any, any suggestions, or when I do read other counties, and I'm open to saying small municipals into it, but it's, you know, the substance of the job description, I think, is accurate and, and what it should be. I'm very open to amending it and adding, you know, non-essential experience or desired experience or anything, anything like that. But it's really not, as I said, like substantially enough different for me not to want to pass it.
Commissioner White?
I believe, what was the point of the DDA interviewing all of us if we are not going to have that information to fully discuss what we all, what we all felt? I mean, and I want to know from the department heads, I'd like to know from employees. How did, how has administrative government worked for those that have worked under it for, not just the last administrator, but the one before? And then there are even people that have been on staff before there were any administrators, which was a long time ago, but they're still here, I think. Brady's still here. So DDA was involved in the last time around in helping to find James Yorki. And so I believe at this point in time, we've had, James had been our employee for four years, four years, correct, and, and now we've had the time to do an assessment. I, we never did do an evaluation of the man in September of his job performance, but I believe this is premature. Why can't we talk about what, what DDA came up with from all of us, from everyone? What, what are the things? Maybe there are the people that work under, for the administrator who have different experiences than we as a board. We are the administrator's boss, so that dynamic is different than him being the boss of everybody else in the organization. So I'd like to hear from them. What are we, are we, what we see on this side, is it the same as what the employees see? And I'd like to know that information because that would be valuable in, in hiring the next person and knowing, knowing what may or may not need to be changed. And is, what is the danger in not doing this today? I mean, it does, we can still go forward.
It pushes the timeframe out by at least a month.
We can, we can advertise what we currently have with, we've done that with other positions before, with a note, this is in a process of review. I'm, I'm not saying we don't, can't still advertise. We've done it for other positions. This one is really important, and it's really important. We do not rush this process, and we have good, open discussion with all of the information informing us of what is the best path forward.
I don't feel at all rushed. It's, again, what we're getting from DDA, that interview, you were asking, what is that for? What's the point?
Yeah.
That's for the qualitative aspects. And so when we do the interviews, when we get the videos, when we go through and we, as a board, evaluate those candidates, we look at the list just like that was provided for us from the past go-around and see how those candidates fit within those qualities. This is purely just the functions and the duties, those quantitative. So this is, they're two different things, and I, I'm confused as to why that's confusing.
I'm, I'm confused as to why we are in such a hurry to do this, in that why we can't have a full board conversation about, about everybody's opinions or how they responded to the questions from DDA. How, why do we have to do this? We can go out and, and advertise with the Astrid in, I mean, basically, it will be like this, I would imagine, but we need to have a full board discussion. We are the, we are the people that have been elected to provide oversight on the one, one person, and that's the administrator. That's the one county employee that we are responsible for. So I don't understand why we can't have more conver, why we can't, it's beneficial for the public to know also, as in why we're here, to know what the values are, or what, what we as a board and as employees have had as experiences and what they would, what all of us here would like to see in the next administrator. Now, we didn't actually skip over what about having a county manager? What about having other forms? We went straight to administrative. So here we are, but the...
Wait, wait, we went through that. You were part of that conversation.
Oh, yeah. And it was like, well, then let's, we've got to get started on this. Let's go to the administrative thing.
But you just said we didn't do that.
We had like three sentences. We did not have a full discussion on what, excuse me, and Commissioner Sullivan said that we would be responsible, we as commissioners would have a greater workload if we had.
We would be in charge of hiring and firing of department heads and the personnel matters.
Right.
And you were quick to say, well, we, I'm not qualified, we shouldn't do that.
Yes.
So we had this conversation, for you to say that we didn't.
Okay, then I did, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
However, it does not justify rushing this process at all. And the county, the people in this county deserve to know, we deserve to know what all of us think about the administrative form of government.
Well, I don't think that's what the interview was about. The interview was about the, well, I guess I don't know what you guys shared, but it was more about the qualities of the person and their leadership style, and not so much as what their duties are, because that's more or less, there's not a whole lot of differences, as I was saying, between what our just job description describes for duties and functions compared to other counties' administrators. It's, it's pretty well-defined and pretty, as I said, quantitative. And so we will be discussing that. It's just, I'm not sure how that affects the job description.
And I guess I would agree. I see the job description, and I stated this earlier, is totally separate from the qualities that we're looking at, the information that DDA has gathered, which we will get. And we'll have an opportunity, as you mentioned, to look at the videos, to think about those qualities and characteristics, but that is not the same as the job description.
I just want to also say, I don't feel rushed at all. I feel like we don't want to lag or drag our feet, but, you know, this is the second time for me going through this, the third time for Commissioner Starley. I've been involved in hiring EDA directors twice, the CHB director, the NEMOjet director, and so I've been, it might just be a comfort issue with experience. And so I, I'm sorry if it feels rushed, but I feel like we're doing this methodically and, and, and in a very systematic way without skipping steps or, or, you know, cramming it. I'm, I'm just going through this. I don't see areas that we should, you know, like, well, we need this duty in here, or this duty should not be in here. But I am open to amending it. If we want to specifically say small municipalities, I think that's, that's a good suggestion. I'm also open to not having as much experience, but I think that's really valuable. And at the end of the day, when we do the hire, if they have nine years of experience, we can make that call. It doesn't have to be 10. There's always that flexibility when we're doing hiring, and we've seen that in other positions too, just because of how the job market is. So...
Commissioner White?
I would like to, a little inside. Not that I'm uncomfortable with hiring somebody. I've been involved in the search and hiring of two superintendents and three principals involved in all sorts of hurrah at the school that we have not even had in this county building. And so I am not afraid of hiring someone, evaluating somebody, firing people if that's what needs to be done. But there, you don't rush. I have no experience where these important decisions are rushed. It's been a board decision as to what is needed, what didn't work, what do we need in the future. It's not been, this is a basic outline, and now we have to try to do, use our best. We put it out there, we get candidates, and then we have full board discussions, looking at the resumes, looking at who we want to interview, and then we interviewed. And it wasn't, it took, maybe it took longer, but it's, it's how, that's my experience. My experience is, I think I have some pretty strong experience with hiring administrative heads.
That's very valuable. Just where is the rush here? Like, are there things in the job description that you would like changed?
I think that we all need to sit down and go through this in, in conjunction with the results from DDA. What do we want? And let's go through this. Let us all have a conversation as commissioners. Let us talk about this. And what's the, what are the shortfalls? We do not need to compare ourselves or our job description to other counties. As we all are so proud to say, Cook County is different. We are, we are different. We, we are different and kind of better in some, some respects. But we are responsible for ourselves, for our voters, for our county. And so I believe that we can go out, how long do, Allison, how long do we expect it will take before DDA will get information collated and sent back to us?
I think on the timeframe, let me just reference it here. I have it up.
December 10th is what...
So December, yep. So December 10th, they were going to have, by that date, develop the position profile and the advertisement. December 17th, they would bring the profile, everything together for final board approval before they post it.
Commissioner Johnson?
So I just want to respond to Commissioner Mills. Obviously, I'm the one on this board that has the least experience, although I have had some experience in hiring and firing in the private setting. But you're right, I haven't had the experience here as much. So I will acknowledge that my lack of skills perhaps. But I will also say that when I went into that interview and I shared the traits that I thought were important to have and what I would like to see our next administrator do, I was not stopped by the interviewer saying, oh, no, I only want to know your qualities. He took into account my vision for what I, how I would like the next administrator to work in this county. And so the fact that I'm inexperienced here and I wasn't stopped by the interviewer and I heard more than once, that, that kind of seems to be a theme, makes me say, I want to know if maybe the others that were interviewed that day that don't have your experience also responded in a way that I did of looking, what, what kind of roles do we want our next administrator to do? I don't know, because I wasn't privy to that information, and that's what I'm hoping that, that report will give us an idea. I get, there will be no specific names attached to anything, but I'm hoping for an idea of what do we want, not just the qualities. I want somebody honest, with honesty. I don't know, that didn't make your list here. So I'm just saying, I want to see that report before I approve a job description saying that's what we want for our next administrator.
And I guess I would come back and say that traits and qualities and, to quote a phrase used earlier, what I see in the next administrator are things that DDA will help us to look for when they are screening. That is not a job description. They are two very different things. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. So when we have approved job grades, is it always tied to the job summary and all of that? Is it always tied to that? Can we approve the grade 270 today with this job description, subject to change? When we get that information back from DDA, we could say, let's insert, they have experience with some comedy background and maybe a minimum of up to 10, eight to 10 years. Can we, at the next, whenever we decide to talk about this, do that? Approve the 270 today with this job description to be amended?
Yeah, I mean, and job descriptions are never fully set in stone. So, I mean, even if it was approved today, as-is, and there were very little changes from the original job description, even this job description can then go through another review process and be approved with different revisions through next month. I think if you wanted to approve a grade right now and not the revised job description, that is, I don't see an issue with that, knowing that the job description, so the entirety, I'll back up, the entirety of the job description, the summary, the essential functions, the minimum qualifications, the knowledge, skills, abilities, all of that goes into scoring through the Keystone Matrix and those five factors, including like responsibility, level of complexity, the working relationships, internal, external. So even regardless, with the very few changes that there were, this job would still score at a 270. So even if we didn't approve the current revised version and just stayed with approving the grade with the original job description, it still matches.
Okay. Administrator.
Allison, do you have the timeline that DDA put up handy?
Yep.
Kind of just to maybe follow with Commissioner Starley's comments, questions, could you read the tasks associated with the December 17th timeline from them?
So I have, so the item is approved position, profile, and scope of work. The task would be board approves, profile, job description, salary range, scope of work, and timeline.
So we need a job description for the 17th. I like Commissioner Starley's idea of going ahead and approving this, but then maybe, I don't know if we need a special meeting or if we want to put it on at a later date prior to interviews, but then we look at the job description after we have that information from DDA.
I'm wondering too, would you like me to, to reach out to Pat with some more clarification as to their role in kind of updating, modifying the job description based on feed, feedback?
Sure.
Because my understanding, including in the, the informational checklist of information that I need to get to him, includes our job description and the salary range, which is why we're discussing that today. But I'm happy to follow up if you're not ready to approve the current job description for more informational purposes.
Commissioner Starley, would you be willing to make a motion based on your thoughts? And then we would need to come back to this and discuss it prior to any type of interview?
Yes. So I'll make a motion that we approve the job grade at 270 with the present job description that's here, subject to review. And when we get the results from DDA, this is long, when we get the, and I'll do this first. I'll make a motion to approve the job grade at 270 with the job description, subject to review by the 17th of December.
Is there support?
Yes, I'll support.
So we have a motion and support, again, to approve the change in job grade from 260 to 270 with the updated job description, subject to review by the 17th. Commissioner?
Do we want to make the suggestions that Commissioner Johnson said regarding the... the minimum years of management experience or specifically small municipalities? Or do we want to wait till the further review or?
I guess since we're going to get information back from DDA, I'd like to wait and see what they have and what their response is.
I did notice in the knowledge, skills, and ability section, there's several bullet points, and those were added, those were absent from the original job description. Let's see, six one down, considerable knowledge of local government organizational systems and structures. And if that applies, includes small municipalities, or you can add that in there. Commissioner Johnson also mentioned seeing a function about being involved in the recruitment process directly when it comes to department heads. In essential function number two, there is a sentence that says exercises personnel authority to hire, promote, and terminate employees with the approval of the county board. So again, job descriptions cannot be super specific. So they are more, more of a summarized essential function, which something like that, being involved in department head recruitment, that could be an internal practice that we instill, falling under that sentence in essential function number two.
Thank you. Other discussion or questions? A motion and a second. Commissioner White?
Could we, I mean, like, so we'll, I want it in writing somewhere that we are going to sit down and talk about the DDA and then in light of how, of those results, and then review the job description. I'd like to have a date for that as opposed to somewhere, someday we'll do this. I think it's imperative that that happens before we look at any candidates for this position. I mean, it's imperative.
Commissioner Starlee?
Yes, well, would we be able to get that review by the 10th of December, do you think?
That would be a great question for, for Pat. So all of the other information that was requested in the checklist to create that initial profile, on our timeline, the completion date was November 25th. So I informed Pat that these were the two items that we were waiting because we were going to address them today at the board meeting. So we're a little behind on that. But if, if Pat is still able to create and develop that position, position profile and provide information about, you know, the interview, all of that that came from, from that data by December 10th, then you would still have time between the 10th and the 17th, I suppose, to review the job description. But ultimately, only Pat will know if he can get that done by December 10th.
The next week, a couple of us are at AMC, but maybe if we could have it by Friday, 13th? Or even Thursday, because we're done Wednesday.
I will not be back, but certainly the board can go ahead and have time to meet if need be.
Will you be back by Friday?
No, I have, I am, Bobby just popped in and there is a meeting at the Grand Casino in Hinckley related to tribal relations and legislation, and I've agreed to go to that.
Monday, the 16th?
Could do that.
Well, I was going to say, why don't we just do it on the 17th? We can discuss it, have it in our board. I mean, we're scheduled to do that, and it sounds like we'll have it by then.
Yeah.
Almost certainly. So we'll put it in the agenda and sit down, review, discuss, and-
So that will be early on in the agenda?
Yeah.
All right. That makes sense. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? This is really good. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. All right.
Can I just add one more item since I'm up here? Well, I'm not adding an item, but there, I was watching the board meeting last week at the very end when you were talking about the new budgetary request. And there was a pretty heavy discussion about the additional HR FTE request. I felt a little frustrated that no one has actually reached out to me ever with any questions about our workload or duties or the reasonings behind adding a full-time FTE. I know you guys mentioned maybe like, can we modify the current halftime position? Can we add another part-time? So in order to provide you that information versus making assumptions about the HR department, I will be present later on when you are talking about the budget and levy. So if you have any questions directly for me, I'm happy to provide that information.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond that after our preliminary budget discussions, I did ask the administrator to reach out because supposedly I'm not supposed to directly contact department heads. But I did ask for that information and I never received it. So I assumed it went to you, and so I didn't reach out.
Yeah, I've never received any request, which is why I'm happy to come back. And, and you can ask me all the questions you want specifically about the HR position. I'm happy to provide that information.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to item eight. Attorney Hicken?
Thank you. One moment. My iCompass shut down apparently. There it is. Okay, so my item relates to the Law Enforcement Center renovation and expansion project. This is something I previewed to the board last week when the board approved the agreement with the architect. This agreement would be with a construction manager, which is, I think, a particularly important position to have when it comes to jail construction. Because this position will be able to assist us with compliance with all of the, you know, Department of Public Safety regulations and requirements for jails. This position is specifically responsible for keeping the project on timelines, for kind of updating the board on project progress. This position also helps with compliance with our public bid requirements and municipal contracting requirements. They'll draft the contracts for the specific contractors doing the position, or doing the work. They will draft the RFPs that are required along with the architect. They, my understanding is that kind of help us as a liaison between architect and owner. So just like the contract you looked at last week, there are a lot of kind of blanks that still need to be filled in here, specific to timeline. And that is because one would not want to make any commitments about timeline before you actually see the architectural plans. But if you read deeper into the contract, you see that there's a procedure laid out that we agree to as to how to, and how to schedule those timelines and come to agreement to them, how to get to that guaranteed maximum price agreement. So it's all kind of accounted for in these AIA template agreements. So the agreement hires Johnson Wilson Constructors Incorporated. This is the construction manager that we are, that comes to, recommended to us by Brooke Lazard, our maintenance director. He's had prior positive experiences with them, with the hospital projects. So we are not required to put out this contract for bid because these are professional services. Once we get to the construction of the building, that's when we need to put out for public bid, those contracts and requests for proposals. So I, I did a bit of laying out the responsibilities of both the county and the construction manager in the agenda item summary. I stand for questions.
I'd just like to make a comment, and it goes back to something that Commissioner White shared, is having conditions for final payment. And both on pages 18 and 19, there are conditions listed for final payment. So I'm really glad to see that. And thank you, Commissioner White, for bringing that up in previous meetings. Other questions or comments from all of you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for construction manager with Johnson Wilson Constructors.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. You have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner White?
What happens, and I didn't see this, and I'll need to read it again. What are the, for contingencies in the, or does this come with the individual subcontractors if they put forth a bid for the foundation, say? And they get there and even though they had done boring samples, suddenly they hit a pocket of, of rock that goes down 35 feet. And so then they have to blast and everything, and that had not been part of their original bill, bid. Is it in place? How is that additional cost covered? The construction manager eats it? Or how does that work?
I think that's going to be, well, first of all, the agreement does not select the subcontractors.
Correct.
And so this contract does not go through what their individual responsibilities are for payment. And I, that's a pretty specific. I don't know if I can answer your question without-
Attorney Hicken, it's with the ORB management contract. They had absolutely no responsibility for any outcome from any subcontractors, any contractors, nothing. They were totally held not liable. And so whatever happened at the YMCA, the hockey rink, the library, they had no responsibilities.
So the, our relationship with ORB management was that ORB management was an owner's representative. So that is a different legal relationship than we have with a construction manager or with those subcontractors or with our architect. So-
Public information, so this is-
Yes, yes. So it's, it's not a, I'll just say, it's not a comparable relationship as it was with ORB.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? So we have a motion and a second. Anything else?
Oh, another question. And I didn't see this, I didn't get back to the very last pages. And everyone, this is in like size .4. And there is 500 pages.
Here and in March.
Anyway, do they have a clause that if they get it done? A penalty clause if it's not done in a certain amount of time? You know, is that there? And then do they get a bonus for getting it done before the closing date?
So the times and the anticipated milestone dates and any conditions about those come later in this process? Let's see here. I don't think that's included in here.
And it does say that, that essentially should we be dissatisfied with the work of this, the person that is hired, that each of us, they also have seven days if they don't want to work with Cook County either. They, the contract can be terminated.
This, yeah, this agreement includes termination clauses.
I'm done asking questions.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's take a short break before we get on to our remaining items, as there may be a little language. Thank you. Thank you.[323.69]
With the agreements that have been reached, um, within the county makes sense to me. It would just be clean. Everybody's at three percent. Other commissioners want to weigh in on that? Commissioner White?
Run the numbers for us. What's the difference between 2.6 and 3? Because Commissioner Mills talking about the Consumer Price Index, and that's how we went into negotiations facing the, uh, what was being offered to unions. It was based off of those numbers also. And I guess I just thought that, I haven't given it enough thought, but I just thought it'd be like a three percent increase. But I'm, I, and we don't have the money. I mean, I mean, we have the money, but, you know, our frivolous lifestyles could probably be sustained with a 0.4% less. So the 2.6 something. So what's, what's the cost difference? That's all.
Working on it.
Oh.
And I guess for perspective, is it burdensome to have different, or how burdensome is it to have the different colas? I mean, I, I, I want to respect Commissioner Sullivan's consistency approach too. I just.
It's not.
Okay.
This is where we could use some elevator music or, you know, there's that game show that's been on TV and they have the music.
I think the peace and quiet is probably good for our auditor treasure while he's working on numbers.
Five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Per person?
No, total.
Oh.
That includes taxes.
Question on that. Can I ask?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is it bookkeeping wise, difficult to just, no, okay.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Um, so is, Commissioner Mills, is this something you're suggesting then, every time we meet with the unions that we are in par with them every three years? Every two years, I guess it is now? Or is this going to happen every year for us, separate from the unions? This will be separate?
Well, um, what I think we should do for colas, both as an organization for ourselves, or as I said, anyone in the region, the cola is a cost of living increase. And so that's a measurable amount and I think should be based on the Consumer Price Index. And so if we're going to be giving ourselves a cost of living increase, I think we should follow the cost of goods. I still believe we should look at our salaries separately, but not in, I don't want to confuse adjusting our salaries with the cost of living increase. That's why I like to try to keep that separate and, and I say as much in the negotiations and, and I, I try to have an open mind, but I think I will continue to be advocating for that. So it's just, um, it's, um, is what I would advocate year after year for a cost of increase would be just following that, that CPI index, so.
Other questions or comments?
I like that idea.
Would you like to make?
Consumer Price Index.
Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to, um, adjust the commissioners' salaries for the coming year to reflect the Consumer Price Index adjustment of 2.6. Is that it? One, zero?
Two points.
Six. 2.6 percent.
Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Other discussion?
I just also want to point out that that CPI index is always changing. Inflation is always changing. The latest number that's published on the Bureau of Labor Statistics is, uh, ending October 2024. So I want to recognize this may not be the actual inflation at this point, but it's the latest data that we have. And so that's what I believe we should be using is the, the data that we have. And if we do this every year, whatever is lost between now and the end of the year will be made up the following year. So it's just offset a little bit there.
So we have a motion and support. Any additional discussion?
And pardon me, this is the national. And so it might behoove us to just look at the Midwest. If it's not too, if, if, if we're okay with that. I just don't remember how to get there. It's, yeah, and to be, to be totally transparent, because I, I, I want to, I think that's important. This is the percent change in CPI for all urban consumers, U.S. city average. So we should, there's only, the other one is a W, which is more of the rural, and so I'll look for that for the Midwest. But pardon my fast fingers here with, with the first, the first number.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Commissioner White.
Brady, do you have to have that today?
No.
We can give it to you next time around?
Yes.
I'd like to rescind my motion. Or do we need to go through with it first?
We need to go through with it. We'll wait and maybe we'll have some information that will help us.
Okay.
Here's our wish. Where is the Midwest?
And we could do, we could do Duluth even. I just don't see a, um, a 12th month. Yeah, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the same 2.6% for Midwest region, October 2024.
Yep, I, that's the best.
All urban consumers, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for 2.6%. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll have that in our resolution form.
Yeah, I'll bring that back in a resolution form, so it's easy to find.
All right, and it will help us to determine levy amount and just continue to get more precise.
Yeah, and, um, per diems. Are you considering any change to per diems?
I do not recommend any changes in per diems at this time.
I'll bring, I'll bring it, let's say here differently. I'll bring it back that way, but of course you can change it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner?
Just one thing I'd like us to think about too is per diems haven't changed in a long time and the inflation happens to everything, including those. I'm comfortable not changing it now, but I just want us to be thinking that through, that our costs of, of traveling and our time, um, that too has an increased, an inflationary cost, so. But I'm, I'm comfortable not addressing that now, largely because of, like I said, our budget restrictions.
All right. We'll move on to item B, which is the 2025 budget and levy. So any updates that you have for us auditor powers?
I do not have any updates, um, but happy to answer questions and develop any information to see.
Any questions? Commissioner Johnson?
I'm wondering if we've had any updates from Public Health and Human Services from the numbers that we were presented in August. Usually by now, other funding that didn't get included gets included. So have those numbers been updated?
Yeah, Plaman gave me updated numbers, uh, two weeks ago.
Can you send that out to the commissioners please, so we have information on that?
It's, it's in the, uh, the numbers that I presented last week, the final there.
No, yeah, I get the final levy amount. I would like the breakdown. That's how I analyze numbers, is looking at all the information and comparing.
Other questions?
And I just want to verify the amounts, please, about, um, our debt service and construction and, um, CIP costs. We have maintenance costs for each year from CRBPS, and I want to make sure I'm understanding how we're budgeting for those things going forward in 2025.
CRBPS?
You know, that maintenance, all the deferred maintenance that we have been talking about on our buildings and what is included in 2025's budget for that and what projects have been identified for that? Or are we going with, I mean, some things didn't get done in 2023 and 2024, so I'm just wondering.
So a breakout from our facilities manager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, we bonded for 2023 and 2024 last year. But yeah, you can, you probably saw a summary then, but, uh, it wouldn't hurt to see again what's included in that.
And then just making sure, so we BK the costs that we approved just last time around, over $600,000.
That would be included in bonding that would come later this year.
So there's nothing in the 2025 budget as far as debt service in anticipation of that? Bonding?
Yeah, two. They, they won't schedule us for a payment in the year that the bonds are made. So that's going to come in 2026, since we'll issue the bonds in '25. But I can get you what that will be. You know, anticipated for 2026.
I'm just thinking when we're thinking about setting this budget for 2025 and what we're including, remembering that the following year, we're going to have a debt payment. And you need to factor that in when you're making decisions today. And that is just for one project.
One thing I'd like to just make a comment on, commissioners have received, um, an email from an individual concerned about the fees that we approved last week. And I just want to make certain that for the public, they're aware that those fees include septic compliance through land services. This is related to the vacation rental fee. And, um, so that certificates of compliance and a septic inspection is costly. And, um, so I think the public needs to be aware of that. And also our fees are still lower than many other counties. So I still feel very comfortable with our decision last week, but I thought that information about septic compliance for the public would be really important to share. Commissioner White?
Well, while Brady's still pondering, um, and I would like to say that all of the fees, like even the, um, vacation rental permits have increased and it's, it's all part of the costs of government going up. And the, we increased the fee for the vacation rental to $600. And, um, when this started, it was a shot in the dark by the county. And this was like, just a little bit before my time, kind of like it was. And so how many property owners would be interested and what would the cost be for administering this, this program? And so just like everything, all of the increase in fees is because of an increase in life across the board. So it's, it's not picking on vacation rental property owners or anybody.
And also those fees that are collected are used for host compliance, so that we are looking for, um, potentially vacation rentals that are out there that are not licensed by the county. So there is a significant cost for that as well.
Yeah, Eller's estimate is that our bond costs would be about $540,000 a year starting in 2026 if we bond next year. Of course, that's subject to interest rate change and what are the final numbers for construction, obviously. And, uh, and the anticipation is that, uh, also in that, that we would, uh, pay off the sales tax bonds by that time, by 2026. And then we would use the, uh, reserve, or the money coming in that we're not spending of the sales tax to make those bond payments.
And then some, right?
And then some, and then we're saving.
So it's like 1.2, how much is the revenue, 1%? Is it like?
Well, it's been over 2 million for two or three years now. It took a little drop this year.
Yep.
But, uh,
But a conservative estimate would be 1.9, or what was the, I can't remember.
Probably 2.2, 2.2, I think is a, I think, I want to see the numbers, you know, at the end of this year, but, uh.
But that's only for how many years?
That's through 3030.
3030, so four years.
Yeah.
Four years, so that's eight, no?
And actually, it isn't all at 3030, because it ends after the first quarter, so.
Okay, so now 8.6, 6.6.
And that's assuming we, you know, it isn't going to need all of that payment for this, obviously.
Right.
You know, if we're getting over 2 million a year, the assumption was there may be more, more building projects in the next few years, and this could cover more bond payments, but.
Thank you for that detail.
Yeah, I think that's extremely valuable, and Commissioner Johnson's point is extremely valuable too. It's important to, to keep this debt service and potential future debt service at top of mind and how that can work into our budget and, um, how it may not be able to. And with those additional revenues, they are finite, they're not, they're not in perpetu- in perpetuity. And so somehow incorporating the, those debt payments, much like I was talking about with our use of fund balance, if we can kind of wean ourselves off of that, but plan to use it, uh, it can minimize that impact on, on, on our tax levy and taxpayers, so. And accomplish what we're trying to achieve. So requires some careful planning, that's, um, that's complex and ever-changing, but, um, but it's very encouraging.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. So Brady, on the bonding starting in 2026, uh, what's the timeframe there? Is it the beginning of the year, middle, end? Because it kind of, I think, has an effect on how we look at our budget and money coming in. And is it like right away in '26, or is there a timeframe?
Depending on where we issue the bonds, typically, uh, we make, uh, that first payment in February.
Oh, okay. Other questions? Well, I know we're getting, um, feedback from our constituents. We have TNT this evening. We'll gather more information there. But we have a, a lot of information to analyze over the next couple of weeks. And I appreciate all the time and effort everybody's taken to put into this big decision that we have. Any other items on the budget or levy right now? All right, we'll move on to our inter-administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Newest, newest updates, continued conversation around immediate short-term space needs. I met with, uh, PHHS Director Allison McIntyre and Facilities Director Brooke Lassard, uh, again. And we looked at some options that Brooke proposed, uh, for space in the basement. Kind of details there, as you know, one of those rooms was damaged, water damaged and needed some mold remediation. It shares a wall with the break room, the wall that has the, uh, plumbing. And so it's a significantly smaller room. And a thought that we're going to explore in a little more detail is the, that room needs to be completely gutted to deal with the mold remediation anyways. And you could flip, because of the shared wall, you could flip the sink and move that into a smaller break room. And then in the basement, what you would have is the existing break room, which has southern and western light windows and the potential to create a handful of offices down there. And then there's also a component of looking at our, um, some of the rooms that are being used for storage down there, uh, state archives consolidating, and, um, even potential of having a vendor assist with documents that maybe our staff don't have the time to get to, but could be removed due to retention, retirements, requirements. That's not a for sure thing, just need to explore and talk to them more about where they're at with that. And also maybe some storage in other locations of the building, recorder's office and, um, the old search and rescue building, where all talked about as options of places where we might store things in a temporary capacity to free up some space down there. So more to come on that. Brooke and I have been kind of in conversations and, and talking about that. We hope to kind of have a, a more detailed rough plan to go to the Building Committee Friday, the 13th, I believe, is our scheduled meeting. And so we would, we would talk about that there. Uh, other items, I, I reached out to ClearGov. Some of you know that ClearGov was a, uh, budgeting software that was purchased with the intention of, um, being a, a forward or public-facing tool that the public would be able to, to see. It's a project that, you know, James was working on pretty closely, pretty independently. And so just want to reach out to them and make sure we have access to that tool that we purchased and figure out the status of the project. I got some initial responses from them, but I, I haven't gained access or got a full status update. But when I do, I'm happy to share that with, with everyone. And then in our LEC BKV project, round two is scheduled for the 12th. And we're hoping to have Henry and the rest of his team show up and provide us with preliminary floor plans and just kind of their, Commissioner White's been part of this process before. They, they take all the information that we give them and they, they put something on paper. And then we sit down as a group with all the stakeholders I've mentioned multiple times and look at it and figure out what works and what doesn't. And usually, in the past, at least, we've gone through two or three iterations of that process before they, uh, before we find consensus on, on what we're looking for. But that's, again, scheduled for the, for the 12th. Then we'll provide updates on how that process goes once that's done as well. Yeah, few, few messages and emails regarding the budget from the public. Nothing that anyone wanted to be read or shared, but just thoughts and concerns. Yeah, that's, that's the most of it.
Thank you. Move on to commissioner updates. Commissioner Johnson?
I don't have anything to report today.
Commissioner White?
I, um, was in on a Zoom meeting yesterday for the coastal waters of the lake, of all of the Great Lakes. It's a project, the study won't get done until 2028. It's a massive undertaking, but it's got representatives from two countries, any number of states. And then actually, um, it's about water quality and, so it's the pollution, it's silt, it's erosion. It's all of the cultural components that are impacting and climate components that are in, yeah, that are, uh, changing our Great Lakes. And it's, it's a focus to keep, and tribal nations also. It's to keep as best we can our waters clean. So that was, that was about it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Um, front of mind was the CHB meeting yesterday in Duluth. And, um, learned that Dave Lee, the Carlton County Public Health Human Services, Director will be retiring. It's his last CHB meeting, as well as Patty Martin, who is the Public Health Supervisor, will also be retiring. So two very significant leadership positions in Carlton County, um, are, are changing over. Uh, we also had one resignation from, uh, CHB staff member who, uh, will be starting her own business as, um, kind of a wellness coach. And, um, she was in charge of mesh and, um, our children and family home visiting program throughout the region. And so it's a very important and significant position that, um, sad to see her go, but, um, but we'll start that search as well. What else can I share? Well, I guess that's probably all. Yeah, that's all for now.
Right, Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Um, well, last week was a short week with the Thanksgiving and all, but over the last couple of weeks, I've received, um, some concerning phone calls about the vertical tower and then also about the fact that we raised the fees on the VRBO pretty high because it had just been raised two years ago. So trying to console people that, you know, no, it's not just for somebody to update a record. It goes for a lot of different areas, so hopefully that will be satisfactory to folks who are concerned about it. One particular person has three VRBOs, so I can understand, you know, where they're coming from with, with the amount of fees then that's been raised, so. But, um, and I also think, because we had, um, a very large committee looking into all this, you know, three years ago, four years ago, maybe five. Maybe it's next year's time to look at it again. And, um, just kind of see where we've been and where we want to go and, um, update some things from the variety of people. from the variety of people that were on that committee, too, to see what their viewpoints are. It's always good to refresh.
I think that's a really good suggestion, and I know Andrew Beavers is, you know, working with all of the licensure for 2025, and maybe when that's all completed, that would be a good time to take a look at that.
That'll be it. Oh, and looking forward to AMC.
Absolutely. Well, being a short week, I had a number of meetings that were pushed to this week, and the Cook County Coalition of Lake Association does not meet in December because they attend MINCOLA, the Minnesota Coalition of Lake Associations. They do offer a Zoom option on that, so I'll be attending that tomorrow. And we also have CECLAP and Firewise coming up later this week, so I'll report back at our meeting next, two weeks from today. And with that, we have recognition of staff. We have several staff anniversaries here in the month of December. Mark Buckman with the Law Enforcement Center, two years. Neva Maxwell with Land Services, three years. Also in Land Services, Diana Lindquist, for 11 years. Allison McIntyre with PHHS, 12 years. And Lisa Sorley with the Highway Department, 16 years. So we so appreciate their efforts. And then a couple of milestone anniversaries, both from the Law Enforcement Center, Ben Hallberg and Lindsay Melkey, 20 years with Cook County. We thank them greatly for their service. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there support? Support. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, we're just waiting. Your last chances to, it's important to make motions.
It's okay, don't need it.